Just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Before we get started, we have two public hearings for the ordinance of 2023-16, which is the vacation of a right-of-way. This is for Moller's Lane. And Ron, do you have anything to add for this? You've presented it on the screen.
I thought the graphic was worthwhile because it's a little out of the way piece of right-of-way. It is one of those old pieces of right-of-way that was planted when Moller subdivision was planted, actually in the county, I think, before. It was part of the city. It goes over to the property line. That is Crown Point that we see beyond it. The probability of it ever being extended seems to be very remote.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open?
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. Did you need a motion?
Amy's got me over here. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on 23-16? Motion's been made? Second. Amy?
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna? Daryl?
Yes, excuse me.
Ron has noted that this is a piece of property that goes to the property line and it butts the back of Crown Point, so it is very unlikely to ever be used. There are no utilities in this easement corridor, but yet we retain that going forward. And then it would be split-
There's a storm drain in it.
Storm drain to it, but we retain the easement for that. And then each, it would be divided down the middle, each property owner receiving half. Correct?
Correct.
Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this? Counsel, any comments on this? If not, would entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Jamie.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna?
Yes.
Daryl?
Ordinance 2023-23 is the Unified Development Ordinance. Is there a motion to open this public hearing? Motion's been made, second by Jamie.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna? Daryl?
Okay. Philip Roth from American Structure Point is here. Also, Sarah's been working on this for quite a while. We've had a couple different meetings in the last two months regarding this. Philip, do you want to just sort of briefly maybe give us an update?
Actually, we have David Baird-
David to do it?
Virtually.
Okay. David, you want to just give us a brief update on the UDO?
Yeah, sure. So I was able to send a full copy that should be available to all of you. We were able to get a recommendation last week from the Steering Committee. We had a Steering Committee meeting. They gave a recommendation. We then had a Planning Commission meeting, which also had, gave a recommendation at that point. So that is how we're here at the City Council meeting tonight.
David has been very involved in this along with Sarah and the Structure Point team, so he can answer any questions you have, maybe in the details. It does come with favorable recommendation. Anything else from the council before we open it up to the public? Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance? Seeing none. Any other comments, counsel? If not, take a motion to close the public hearing for 2023-23. Motion's been made by Rick, second by Daryl.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna? Daryl?
Yes.
Today is Tuesday, October 10th, the time being 6:35 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order at this time. Please summon your electronic devices to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. The city requests that participants in this meeting be fully voluntary and unwobbly. It's available and taken in the back of the room. Amy, could you please call it?
Jamie?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Vianna?
Here.
Daryl?
Here.
You should have received a copy of the minutes for the first public hearing, September 12th. Any edits, additions, or corrections? Can we look at all these together? All the minutes? The second public hearing for the same night and the general meeting the same night. Any edits, additions?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes for the September 12th public hearings, both of them, and the September 12th meeting.
Motion's been made, second by Kevin.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna? Daryl?
Yes.
Perfect. First item under Old Business, Chief McNeely has his additional appropriation for public safety in general. This is on second reading.
This is second reading. If you remember, this is for the reimbursement for the vehicle that was damaged, a replacement of the vehicle that was damaged, the equipment involved with that, as well as the retirement and resignation payouts for two employees.
Any questions for the chief on that? Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve that as presented? Motion's been made, second by Vianna.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna? Daryl?
Yes. Thank you, Kevin.
Amy has a, do you want me to run through these? Okay. 2023-17 is the Greensburg Community School Corporation budgets on second reading. Andrea Phillips is with us this evening. If you have any questions for her? If not, motion to approve on second and final? Second. Motion's been made by Daryl, second by Kevin.
Jamie? Jamie?
I abstained.
Okay. Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna? Daryl?
Yes.
Wait, of clarification, Jamie cannot vote to approve budgets via electronic message or electronic meetings as part of the state requirements. I forgot to explain that. I was like, why is he abstaining? I was like, you know. So 2023-18, which is the 2024 city budget, anything since the last reading of that? If not, would entertain a motion to approve as presented?
Still moved.
Motion's been made by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Vianna.
Jamie?
Abstained.
Rick?
No.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna? Daryl?
Yes.
2023-19 is the second final reading, elected salaries for 2024. No changes been made to that?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Daryl?
Second.
Second.
Second by Rick?
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
2023-20 is the general fund city employee salary for 2024. There is one change that I would like to offer for the salary ordinance, and then we have a second one to consider as well. So the first one is to add a line that creates a position in the salary ordinance for a project manager. I explained to the Board of Works, as we know, city engineer Ron May is going to leave us at the end of the year, and that position has been advertised as city engineer. It has been paid to promote. It has been given to colleagues. It has been everywhere, and we have not had any success in attracting an applicant for that role. In turn, we are working to expand it outward a little bit. Currently, you have to either be a licensed PE or a engineer by training. When Ron and I spoke about it, we've sort of opted to maybe pursue some more, something more like a construction manager, project manager, Department or Director of Public Works, something not more engineering, but more construction and project oriented. The city engineer job description does not allow for that, so we've created this very generalized term of project manager. I provided you a copy of the job description that the Board of Works did approve earlier this evening. We have listed in the salary ordinance the city engineer and the project manager position because we have to pay based on a job description that matches the salary ordinance. We will not hire both. The budget does not sustain hiring both. We can't do that. But this will give us flexibility in trying to find someone to fill that role, to fill that need upon Ron's exit. I would ask that you approve that, and it is not impactful to the budget at all, which we've already passed. So I need to, I would take a motion on that amendment before we vote on the whole thing.
Make a motion to approve the amendment.
Motion's been made by Jamie.
Second.
Second by Daryl. Any other questions or comments? Amy?
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vianna? Daryl?
Yes.
Okay. This second consideration comes from Chief McNeely. Chief, if you would like to address the council with your request, please.
Good evening, council. I normally don't have prepared statements, but tonight I want to get this message out concisely in a timely manner and out of respect for your time. I am before you tonight to present a proposed change in salary ordinance for the police department. With the hiring crisis that is plaguing law enforcement across this nation, we are struggling to fill our open spots and are at danger of losing valuable experienced police officers to other departments. These other departments pay more and are not cutting their benefits for their employees. The position of a police officer is not an easy position to fill. The standards are high, and it's not a job that more body can fill or that someone could be trained to do in a week or two. Our proposal is to spread the salary of two of the open positions that we're struggling already to fill across the salary of the other officers. It is in no way raising any taxes, does not burden any other department, and does not even affect the proposed budget that you just approved. I understand your concerns for the safety and security of this community, and that is our daily concern as well. We're currently operating at 20 officers, and we are working hard to ensure that the citizens are receiving the same protection they would receive with the 24 officers we're slated to have. We're currently in a situation we've never been in. We have four open positions and currently have four officers in hiring processes for positions outside of our agency with the state police. If they all leave and we cannot replace those open positions we have, we're looking at a staffing number we've not seen since the early 2000s. As a reminder, it costs a city approximately $70,000 to train an officer and outfit them, and it takes close to a year to fully train that officer for them to be able to patrol. We fought hard to get to 24 officers, and many of you have been part of those conversations and those decisions, and we thank you for the support in doing so. I would not be presenting this proposal today if I thought that there was another way to keep our experienced officers here. The mayor is entrusted with the direction and leadership of this police department to me, and I take that trust very seriously. I'm standing before you to present the current situation at the police department and present to you what could happen if we don't take this issue seriously. I'm also looking for your trust and leadership of this department, the officers' unified decision in support of the officers that are committed to this community. If you have other solutions that will help keep our experienced officers here or have reasons why this wouldn't work, I'm open to hearing them, and I'll take any questions that you have.
So I think, I think maybe the biggest question that might come up from this, chief, is why wouldn't it have been presented during the budget workshop, during the budget proposal? Right now, we're coming, we're coming and talking about this basically when we're approving the second reading of this, right? That's the concern, I think, from a lot of us. I think the other reason, and I don't mean to speak for everybody, I'm just sharing some of the concerns is, you know, we're trying to put this in place, and we're doing it at the last minute, and we haven't had time to fully vet it. I think, looking at some of those salaries, we're not completely out of line. We, so I think my, I guess my opinion is, is maybe that we, we not do this right now. We can take a look at it, and then if we do end up running into a crisis, then maybe we look at making some other alternatives, changes. Maybe we need to look at our recruitment process, but there's other alternatives I think we need to look at before we do this. I think putting it in now or rushing through it, and we're not having time to really dig into it to decide if that's the right, right thing to do. You mentioned a shortage. We're already four officers down, right? And some of these changes don't even occur until next year. We're already four officers down. What if we lower our staffing crisis? We lower our officer number down two more officers. Now we're even a bigger gap when we start losing people. I just, my opinion is, I don't think this is the right move to make, and we should have probably planned this sooner if that's where we were going, so that we had time to consider that, make, think about all the ramifications that decision will make.
Sure, I'll address that. So first off, Jamie, you are on the Board of Works, and so you've been part of our last two, our two ago hiring processes in which we had multiple positions to fill, and we were able to come up with one viable candidate. And then this last process where we didn't have any, and we weren't able to present anybody to you. So, and that, that has been, you know, that was last month. That was in September when we were able to do that. The second portion of that is the fact that we, we did reach out during, during the budget process expressing that we thought this would happen if there were insurance changes. That was done during insurance committee meetings. That was done in department head meetings. That was done through me and communication with you guys, both in September and in October. And quite honestly, we didn't get much response.
I would say the, we did discuss the insurance changes. I agree. And I think where we felt like, we weighed the alternatives and decided that the decision we'd made on the insurance was probably the best way to go. And I think that's where we came out on the insurance. It wasn't that we ignored those. We talked through that. But this is a significant change from talking about the fossil card out rule versus reducing two officers and then spreading the salary. So it's a, it's a significant difference. I hear what you're saying. We did discuss that piece, but we didn't discuss what you're proposing tonight.
Sure, I understand. I understand that, Jamie. You know, to go on top of this, I know I expressed to you guys as well, we didn't, we didn't anticipate state police was going to open up their process to 300 laterals, which every department in the state is, every chief or sheriff that I've talked to is suffering from that as well. They're all having people look at leaving. You know, I think that the number that is being proposed by doing this, the 60,000 mark, is where all other smaller agencies are going to be trying to get to. And I think our decision has to be, are we going to be, are we going to get there first? Are we going to get there last? And I think getting there first gets us more people and keeps our people here. I don't want to speak of, I don't want to speak of things that are possible, but I can't prove. But I do know, I have one officer that's in the process that says if this goes through, he's not leaving. I can't speak on the other three because none of the other three have said that to me. That one did say, this is enough of a change that he wouldn't go.
Now, we've got these two positions.
Yes.
How long is it going to be before you come back? I know that's a hard thing to answer, but-
Right. That's looking into the crystal ball and, and, you know, I wouldn't probably be back before you two. I'd say the minimum would be two years. A lot of that's going to depend on growth of the city. It's going to depend on housing growth. It's going to be, depend on economic growth. You know, we were really lucky to get to that 24 spot, and you guys were a part of that. And it, what it does is it gives us some relief. It gives us that fourth detective. It gives us an extra officer on patrol. It just allows us to have that belief.
With me being an ex-city employee-
Sure.
I know what the city's biggest asset is. It's the employees.
Absolutely.
So we need to keep them as happy as we can. So-
And I'm not even that worried about keeping them happy. This isn't out of happiness. This is out of, I don't want to use the word fear, out of the possibility of if we don't replace those four, and four more leave, now we're eight down.
And your morale goes down.
Your morale, morale's already down, just being four down. So going to eight down makes it even worse. And then we get, do get to the point where we start suffering, can we, can we protect the citizens the way that we want to be able to protect them?
Let's go back to the 24.
Sure.
Budget cycle after budget cycle. We need more officers. We need more officers. We get to the 24. Any other way we're going to get to the 24?
Sure.
My frustration is now you're telling me, no, we really don't need 24. We can make, we can do the 22. And we should never get, we should never have been asking for 24 to begin with. If 22 could cover it efficiently, then that's all we should have been asking for the past budget cycles.
Okay.
What's your, what's this, what's the effect of this? Let's say it happens. What's the effect of this going to be on overtime for the department?
Well, right now, we're operating with 20, Kevin. So I, I'm already paying overtime.
Does 22 eliminate overtime altogether?
Yeah, it puts us at eight and eight on patrol, which is where we want to be, and it gives us three detectives instead of four. We just don't have that extra guy that we can bounce in. That extra guy we got for, what was it, 12 hours? We approved it that night, and the guy came to me the next morning and said, hey, I'm going to be a fireman. So we never have been to 24. We've barely been to 23.
I know that you and your team have been working on this very diligently and trying to figure out how to fit in the existing budget.
Right. Yeah, there's no budget change at all.
I think that's commendable, and I think a solution is commendable. Where do you, you know, again, we're not trying to get into the whole hypothetical, right? But if this passes, if this goes through, what's that look like in the next six months, do you think?
As far as-
Like, how does it, if it passes, what's it look like in the next six months?
Well, hopefully, we have many of those officers that are thinking about leaving not leave. We keep that, those experienced officers here, the ones we don't have to take a year to train. We don't have to put $70,000 more into an officer that may leave, you know, because we're, we don't get up to a competitive pay, which, I'm not saying we're not competitive. We are competitive with some of the other agencies around us, but can we be more competitive? Can we be the ones that lead the charge and not, we can't catch up with the state police. Nobody can do that. We know that. We know we can't compete with the state police's pay and their, their benefits. And then, you know, hopefully recruiting more lateral transfers.
Two of the four other process, other processes are in the state police process, correct?
All four are in some sort of the state police process.
All in the state police process. Okay.
Whether it's to be a trooper or one of the other state-related agencies.
Yeah. And even if we make this change, we're going to struggle to, we're not going to compete with that from a pay-wise. It just-
Well, depends. I mean, you got to look at, you know, are they willing to go back to the academy if they have to go back to the academy? I mean, that's a 25, 25-week process. One of them's already said, I really don't want to have to go back and go through that, but if I have to, I will for my family. Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
How does, how does that work from a recruitment, so that with the state police, now that they can stay in the district, they don't have to move, they transfer in if they have experience at a higher rate, right? So like, our, the quest with this really isn't to compete with state police, but state police is sort of the end result. Other communities are making significant changes.
Yeah. I've talked to several chiefs around us. They're all, they all know that this is, this is, this is coming. Like, this is the end result of the state police doing that. And I think you're going to see some of your larger agencies up around Indianapolis compete with them if not pay more than them, just because they need to. I know IMPD, ISP went to IMPD and said, hey, we got 300 of your officers applying for us, and we're probably going to take them all. And that's an agency that's in a hiring crisis as well.
Or 600.
Right.
Seen on the commercials.
The chart you sent us with the salary comparisons to the communities around us, was that, the pay that you displayed in that chart, was that the pay after their budget cycle this year?
So I showed you-
Or was that there before they went to their budget this year?
So I gave you 23 salaries and 24s.
I'll just, I'll have to see that chart. I can print that email and bring it away. So this is, this is the 24 salaries. That's the one they'll be going to when they finish their budget approvals for this year?
Correct. And what's represented on 24 for Greensburg is if we were to make this change.
That's correct.
Yeah. If not, it was like 54, 300, 54, 3 something?
54,000, 724, and 80 cents.
724. Okay, yeah.
Since this is not a change to the budget, we can be forth of the budget and table this for further discussion, correct?
No.
But we, we'd have to approve the salary ordinance, right? And so if we wanted, if we took it for further advisement, we could come back and amend the salary ordinance, right, Josh? So we could, we can still look into this and make some decisions, but we wouldn't have to rush through it. We'd just have to make an amendment to the salary ordinance.
Yes. You would have, you would have to amend, sorry, you would have to amend, if you did not make the decision today, you would be amending your salary ordinance at some future date if you elected to make the change, you know, two months from now. Right. So, yes, so realistically, you're either going to, you know, you could potentially make the amendment today, you could let the amendment go to a vote, you can vote it down, you could, it could not make to the amendment, and then you could continue to talk about it. I don't think you can, you can't table the salary ordinance. You could table some aspect of this discussion, but the way I would recommend doing that from a parliamentary procedure would be to either call for the vote or call for a motion and not receive the motion or a second, or have it, have the amendment that's being requested voted on, and then have the salary ordinance approved. And then, so I just don't think you can do it as a table.
No, no. I guess what I'd suggest, chief, is maybe what we could do is, we could create a working group with yourself. I'll volunteer. I don't know if we want to get another council member to volunteer.
I'd volunteer.
Yeah, so maybe we could sit down and we could look at not just this option, but we could look at what we're doing for recruiting, and if there's options we could do. But let's, let's look through that, and then we could maybe come back, you know, try to get this done before the end of the year. That way we could get it in place, right? Or at least we could start expediting those things and then come back and maybe make a recommendation to the council for a possible amendment to the salary ordinance.
How many officers are you down now?
Four.
Budget of-
We're at 20.
He's budgeted 24. He's got 20.
I think I would feel better going with Jamie's recommendation than to rush this through without any thought at the 11th hour. I think that's the right thing to do.
Anything else from your, I'm sure you have a lot.
I do.
Counsel, anything else you would like to hear from the chief, or questions or comments?
I think that the message we're trying to send is that we're not, we just don't want to rush through and make a decision without thinking through all the pros and cons of that decision, so that we're making the right decision. So I guess, you know, I mean, oh, light went off in my, oh, sorry. Lights went off in the room I'm in. Sorry. They're on a motion timer.
I understand, I understand, Jamie. I really do. And, you know, I, I've put a lot of thought into this as well. That's why, that's why I'm standing before you.
So, and we just want to put some time into consideration. So that's all, I guess.
I generally try not to just give you my legal point, but I do have a question for you, chief. Are you in a position that you're not going to be able to put the water back in the bucket? I mean, if they table the, if they don't make this decision today, are you losing officers immediately? That would be my only question is, I understand what you were all saying. I understand why you're saying it. My only-
They're not starting tomorrow, but their process is in progress.
Right.
Their processes are in progress currently, and they have, they're weighing out these decisions as they go through this. How far along do I want to get in this hiring process before I'm committed or before I say, well, I gave it a try and I'm ready, I'm ready to stay where I'm at?
I mean, when I was just sitting here thinking and talking, and I was, I was a no walking in. But I just, we need, I think we need another similar timeframe just to dissect this thing and truly understand and have a really good feel and understanding of the impact of both ways.
So I would certainly hope the message to convey back to your officers and the ones that are here is that the council is 100% behind them. They just want to digest it a little bit more to figure out the best method of moving forward. behind them, they just want to digest it a little bit more to, to figure out the best method of moving forward.
As it relates to amendment two, is there a motion that someone would like to make on this topic to include it into the current version of 2023-20? Does anybody want to make a motion to change it?
I'll make motion changing.
Motion has been made by Rick to allow for the 22 officers' salary to be divided. Okay, motion's been made, is there a second? If it does not receive a second, will fail. Anybody going to make a second? Fair game?
That's correct.
Okay. They're not being...
Waiting for a lack of a second.
They're not being a second, the motion will fail. We will not amend the ordinance tonight, but I think we have commitment to put together a group to find a potential solution.
Sure.
And I look forward to you and, and your team helping with that process.
Absolutely, we'll be in touch. Thank you, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for the work.
Jamie, I'll, I'll reach out to you and I'll set up, I'll make sure I set up a meeting between the three of us and, and the mayor and anybody else we feel like we need to include.
Sounds great, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
So ordinance 2023-20 has the amendment that we already made that is proposed with the job description addition. And then it is ready for second with that amendment.
Make a motion, we pass on the second reading with that amendment.
Second, motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
2023-21 is the salaries for water and wastewater employees.
Make a motion, we approve on the second reading.
Second, motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Your item about resolving outstanding checks.
Yes, round two. You should have all had the correct list given to you. Do you have any questions for me about that? It's just a simple reversing those checks and we obviously have that list. In case anybody comes back and needs those funds.
Need a motion to approve the...
Yes.
Seven.
Second, motion's been made, second?
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Okay, this is Veritas's group at month, so we've got a quick slideshow presentation from them on our building project. Sure. They're asleep. Did you change it back over to me? Well, we'll skip that, if it comes on, we'll come back to it. Okay. Sarah, you have 2023-23, which is the Unified Development Ordinance, we had our public hearing. David is obviously still here, so good evening.
Good evening, council. We've been in the developing stages of Unified Development Ordinance with American Structure Point and the planning workshops since February of 2022. We started with a 10-person steering committee, we met multiple times throughout the 18 to 20 months. We also held meetings with contractors in the area and outside of the area that do business here locally to get their input as well. We met with the BZA, Plan Commission, and a few city council members a couple of times to do some edits that have brought us to the completion of this document. This UDO was developed to go hand-in-hand with the comprehensive plan of the city and will be much more updated and user-friendly document than the current ordinances we have in place. Before you is ordinance 2023-23, which is an ordinance repealing Chapter 152 Improvement Location Permits, Chapter 153 Subdivision Control Ordinance, and Chapter 155 Zoning Code in the City's Code of Ordinances. And replacing it with the new Unified Development Ordinance with the intent to codify the new UDO as Chapter 160 of the City Code. I'm asking this evening for your vote to pass this on the first reading that is before you.
I know this has been a, a big uphill battle and lift and multi-year commitment from you and your team and the Structure Point team, so thank you for that, first of all.
Yes, it's been a lot of input from a lot of people and I'm very appreciative of everybody's help and work involved.
We've had, we've had a great committee who volunteered time and knowledge and expertise to help with it as well, so many thanks to them. Any questions for Sarah or David on this? If not, would entertain a motion to pass ordinance 2023-23, the Unified Development Ordinance on first reading, so a motion's made.
Second.
Made by Kevin, second by Jamie?
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, David, for joining us, appreciate it.
So one, just point of clarification, it's within the ordinance, but this, this ordinance, should it be passed on the second reading, would be effective of January 1st, 2024. So for anyone in the audience, it, it does not have an immediate effective date. I just wanted to clarify that for, for, for everyone on the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have ordinance 2023-16, which is the vacation of the right-of-way that Ron presented earlier. Any other questions or comments on that? If not, I'm going to take them, you had anything else from, take a motion to approve that on first reading? First has been made by Kevin, second by Vieta.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
We suspend the rules on that one?
We can, if you want to make that motion.
I'll make the motion, we suspend the rules.
Second. Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vieta? Daryl?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve on the second reading, the right-of-way, vacations are right-of-way, sorry.
Second.
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, I think this, there we go. So, sort of a quick update here on where we are with the project. The site work is underway, if you've been by the site recently, you've seen a lot of progress made in the last month since our most recent meeting. They have some sanitarys still to work, we have had pretty long conversations about water and water meters and how all of that's going to work. And then asphalt and concrete will still be spring of next year, we're not going to quite hit the end of the year for asphalt for those items. Fire station is underway, you've noticed the steel is up, that is the apparatus bay and the wood framing, you can actually start to see it there on the left. This was starting to go up last week, that is the living quarters administrative space. That's the first floor, you can actually start to see the layout and floor plan a little bit, followed by the second floor, it will begin next month. The steel is completely erect, so there isn't a second floor for that. The stairwell and elevator shaft are in place and they have not ran into any issues with procurement of items, which is very, very positive news. Street department is up, the roof is on, you will see in the drone footage that two sides, one and a half sides of the wall are on and that the salt barn, which is in the very top-left corner there of the photo, is underway. They told us today that they're going to pour concrete for that maybe yet this week. And then that will be the first vertical concrete on this project. We also had a conversation with them today about brick, they have all the concrete blocked down, the brick's been ordered. It will be on its way from Nebraska later, either late this week or early next week, hopefully, that's their goal. And then we'll get the stuff for the fire station in November. They, their longest lead item they're looking at now is six weeks on an electric box, so that's pretty good, fits, fits in. And they don't have any issues over there either. No change in the price, we haven't done any of that and we still remain on schedule for the spring of 2024. This is the, the drone video, any questions while that plays or comments? If you've been by, you can really start to see it starting to take shape and, and form and it's, it's coming along rather quickly and overall, I've said it once tonight, so I'll say it again, but not three times, it's going pretty smoothly. We haven't had any issues that we've really ran into and our teams, the Veritas team, the Myron Asian team, the Runabomb team, along with our internal teams have just really been doing a great job of keeping this project moving along full steam ahead. Winter is obviously a deadline that we would like to hit to where it's enclosed so that they can work on the inside while the weather is less than ideal. Mike and Nate have been very proactive in getting responses. We are making lots of decisions on very small details because the big stuff is, is going along nicely, which is, which is really great and refreshing. So, that's, that's it, any questions? Okay, perfect. There being nothing else, just a reminder that our next general city council meeting is Thursday, Thursday, November 9th, 6:30 PM, that is a change, it's up a few days. So please, please be aware of that, we'll send out the reminders and everything, we'll get you the stuff in advance as usual, but please make that note. Don't forget to sign the stuff for Amy, anything else? Perfect, thanks, everyone, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made by Vieta?
Second.
Second by Rick, Amy?
Jamie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, everyone.